The regular monthly to order, please. And we're going to stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. And here we have a volunteer.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is sand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So good evening. And we've had an opportunity to look at the agenda. If all looks well, and we do not need to make any revisions, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. So the first thing up tonight, there are the recognitions and presentations, the One Nelson Awards. So I'm going to get Dr. Hestra to come up and do her thing. Of course, please.
Let me click on the right thing here. All right. So we actually have quite a few things going on this evening. For those of you who are new to us, and I see some new faces here in the crowd, our One Nelson Awards basically recognize those individuals who understand that it takes all of us to be a part of the success of our students. And that means community members, students, classified staff, certified staff, it takes everybody. And so we really like to recognize, and what's so meaningful about, you can come on in, what's so meaningful about this is it's nominated from all different sources. And so I encourage those of you who are sitting here and those of you who are watching on the streaming this evening, check out our Facebook page, our website pages. That's an excellent way to nominate students, community members, our certified and our classified staff. And those nominations can come from anybody. It doesn't have to come from just our employees. And I think that's what makes it so much fun is because we really get to see a diverse voice and perspective of what makes someone a great candidate for the One Nelson Award. So we have four categories. We've talked about that, students, community, classified, and certified. So the first one I always like to do is our student winner. So I'm going to call Dakota Allen Vire up, if you don't mind. So I'm going to come over on this side because this is the side mom is on. You can come here. You can keep coming. Oh, no, okay. All right, Dakota, I'm going to read it. So you can read along, you don't have to read out loud along. But I'm going to read it, and mom is going to sit there and be proud and take a video, and then we're going to take some pictures, okay? All right. So Dakota Vire is recognized for always going above and beyond to help his classmates and his friends. Dakota's teacher, Mrs. Brown, states that he shows remarkable kindness and support to others. He is always willing to lend a helping hand, put others first, and keep our earth clean. His willingness to help in class fosters a positive classroom environment where everyone feels cared for and valued, which is awesome considering we're in October and October is kindness month, right? That's awesome. So we want to say congratulations to you, buddy. Thank you so much for all that you do to make it a better place for the other students, your teachers, the community, and the family. So thank you so much. I'm going to shake your hand. All right, we're going to take a quick picture. We'll go with mom real quick, and then we'll get you, okay? Okay, we're good. We're good. This nice lady, here, why don't you scoot right over here? Okay, we're going to have this nice lady take your picture. It's not in front of your face, is it? Okay. Hold on one second. And you also get this mug that has One Nelson on it. You can put your hot chocolate in it as we get into the cooler seasons. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Okay, the next two, he was not able to make it. Okay, that's all right. So I'm going to call Mr. Rob Mansfield up. Will you come up and join me up here? Yep. So I want to say congratulations. Mr. Mansfield and Mr. Cash were nominated because if you go to pretty much any of our athletic events, you're going to see these two gentlemen, especially this gentleman, at a lot of different things, really going above and beyond to try to serve our students in the best capacity. And so I'm going to go ahead and read the nomination request. So Mr. Rob Mansfield has volunteered as an FCA sponsor for years, serving Rockfish River Elementary School, Nelson Middle School, and Nelson High School. He has been an integral part of the rebirth of the Green and Gold Athletic Booster Club. He volunteers his time by setting up for athletic events, working concessions, providing pre-game meals to teams, helping hydrate the teams during games, and cleaning up after the event. The list goes on and on with the amount of time he spends serving our youth and coaches. So we want to say congratulations and thank you so much for everything that you do for our students, our student athletes, our schools, our families, our community, and just everything in general. So we want to say thank you. Your effort and commitment and service to us does not go unnoticed. So we thank you very much.
I very appreciate it.
Yes, so congratulations. I'm going to shake your hand. We're going to look at this nice lady right here. And she's got, here, take a step a little bit closer. All right, let me get you your mug. I'm so sorry I was not, there you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, okay, this may take a little bit of time because October 2nd was National Custodian Day. And that is where across the United States, we take some time to say thank you to all of our custodians who are our champions of our students and our schools. And that is a theme that we have throughout this year is really recognizing all of our individuals as being the champions of Nelson. And I just want to say thank you very much. Oops, not only were they recognized on October 2nd on the national recognizes, but we wanted to say across the board that for our classified staff for October, that you guys are our One Nelson Award winners. And so we actually, many of our custodians are actually still working right now. So they're not able to make it. Some of them had some earlier shifts, and we're not able to make it. But we do have, I believe, two gentlemen, right? I'm not missing it. Oh, yes, oh my gosh, yes, right in front of me. Three individuals who are able to make it. So I'm going to call you individuals up here. And of course, obviously, as all good things go to plan, in order of those individuals who are able to be here. So if you give me one second, David Lane, if you will come up here. I know. You're the Guinea pig. So I'm just going to keep. Not like that. But the people who stand up here have to sing their alma mater and then interpret a dance while I'm looking for this. So by all means, go ahead, no, kidding. I was not expecting you to take me up on that offer, so I immediately regret that comment. Yes, now that I recognize someone who's going to welcome that. Christina, yes, okay, give me one second, I'm going to get you.
Me and David put on the show.
Yeah, exactly. My word, my word. I picked the wrong guy to bring up here first, didn't I? No, I'm kidding, I picked the right guy. I'll put this right there. Okay, David Lane, all right. So what this says, and it does say something similar on everybody's certificate, but we wanted to just have you understand the heartfelt gratitude that we have for the work that you guys do. And in honor of National Custodians Day on October 2nd, 2025, we proudly recognize our NCPS custodians, the quiet champions who work behind the scenes every single day to make sure our schools are clean, safe, and welcoming for all students, staff, and families. Custodians are more than just the keepers of our buildings. They are the caretakers of our learning environments, role models for our students and valued members of our NCPS family. Your hard work each day makes a lasting difference in our schools. So thank you for all that you do. So thank you so much, appreciate it. Yep, so we're going to, you can't escape this. We're going to slide on over here. Yep, yep, all right. All right, here you go. And I will get you your mugs at a safe time. I knew 20 of them was not going to work out. Even I can recognize that that would be a little difficult. The next recipient is Ms. Christina Nyla or Neela?
Neela.
Neela, okay, Christina Neela. And Ms. Christina is new to us. And so we're so excited for you to join our family. And just like with Mr. Lane, we just want to say thank you so much. I know you were very, I know going through the process, very, very excited to be able to be a part of this. And we're so grateful for you to join the Rockfish River community and our family and to be able to continue to support our students and serve as a role model and to be able to give back and have our students be able to see the different members of our community willing to give back and help them out. So we want to say thank you so much for all that you do. We want to congratulate you. We're going to have Ms. Lopez take your picture. All right, so we're going to get Ms., can you slide to your right? Like, do a little cha-cha over this way? Okay, all right. Okay, super, thank you so much. And thank you for being here. All right. And next up is Mr. David Johnson. If you will please join me. So congratulations. For those of you who do not know Mr. Johnson, and I don't know how that's possible, but he is that smiling face that you see when you enter in Rockfish River Elementary School and always willing to go above and beyond to do whatever it takes. And for those of you who don't really know, it's super hard to find custodians nowadays. And these are the individuals that, you know, the building doesn't get smaller just because you're down a custodian. The building stays the same size, the students are still coming in, and there's still all the work that needs to be done. And so we just appreciate the willingness to go above and beyond and kind of shoulder that responsibility and do so with a smile on your face. Because our students see it, our staff sees it, our community sees it, not only in how you carry yourself, but in the building in and of itself. And so we just want to say thank you so much for everything that all of you do. And thank you for you and your service back to our schools. And we appreciate it. So thank you, congratulations. All right, we're going to get a nice picture with Ms. Lopez. We're going to slide to the right right here. We're going to go in with, uh-oh, okay, yep. And I lied, we actually are able to give you those. Oh, you want that too? Oh, my gosh, what's happening? So you're going to get your certificate, and you're going to get your mug that either the pencils go in or the hot chocolate goes in. Anything else I don't want to know about, okay? All right, there you go. Thank you very much. And so for those custodians that weren't able to make it today or this afternoon, what will happen is I will make sure that I get out to the schools and thoroughly make sure that they can't escape and that they will be recognized in front of whoever is around. And pictures will be taken, and we will continue to celebrate them. So we just want to say thank you so much. And thank you for indulging me in being able to recognize our One Nelson Award winners as a reminder. Anybody can nominate. It's just because someone gets nominated in September, August, or October, they still have a chance to be a winner all throughout the school year. So don't worry about that part, okay? Thank you. All right. And then I'm up again, aren't I? Okay, so every year, school board and school board members have an opportunity, and I need to move that because that's not on the right one, and that's my job. Oh, yes, and that's my fault. I did miss one, our certified employee. And thank you for reminding me, and I've now lost it. But Mr. Zach Wingate is our certified employee. He is a school counselor at the high school. So I will make sure I come by and I find him. He did email and say that he was unable to make it this evening. And Zach Wingate is recognized for his amazing work with our students. He works hard to ensure that NCHS students are enrolled in classes that align with their future goals. He has been visible and active in collaborating with teachers, students, and administrators during the entire schedule change process. If those of you who don't know, the high school level schedule changes take place in those first couple of weeks, and really that first week. And it is fast and furious to make sure that we get those schedules updated and correct and aligned with what the graduation requirements are, but also the interests and the goals of the students. He is always positive, never hesitates to help in any way he can, and he never makes you feel like it's an inconvenience. He understands the importance in establishing programs and not just filling classes. He knows the students well. He's including their goals and their interests in their schedules, and he is incredibly hardworking school counselor. So we want to say thank you so much to Mr. Zach Wingate. Fortunately, he was not able to make it this evening due to a prior commitment, but we appreciate everything that he does. So thank you, sorry. Kind of sped ahead onto the next one. So sorry about that, thank you. So every year, the VSBA works to recognize individuals who on school boards are looking to promote their professional development through VSBA and the different programs and conferences above and beyond, not just the annual conference. And so every year, there is a recognition of school board members who are recognized. And this year, we have a recognition of Ms. Margaret Claire for the VSBA School Board Academy over the last two years accumulating a certain amount of points to be able to qualify for that. We also have Ms. Shannon Irvin. Ms. Shannon Irvin is the person who tries to remain as invisible as possible, but we keep bringing her back over to the spotlight. She has served as our deputy clerk for many years and is that behind the scenes magic worker, not only for the clerk, but also budgets and our finances. So we appreciate that. And has been recognized for a VSBA School Board Academy Award winner. And because I am always able to learn as much as I can and tag along with Ms. Irvin or Ms. Claire to many of these opportunities. I was awarded School Board Academy, but I just thank the individuals that I get to attend with and learn and grow with. So thank you so much. Those are our VSBA School Academy.
Now we're on to the section comments from board members and Ms. Turner Giles.
So congratulations to everyone that received a reward tonight. Certainly, I wish Dakota was still here, just an amazing little. I know, I know, but he's amazing. So so proud of him. And Mr. Mansfield, and I'm sorry, Mr. Cash is not here. But you, but you know how invaluable your presence is. I don't care where we are, you are there, Mr. Cash is there. And more importantly, you take care of our athletes. So thank you for everything that you do, just so appreciate it. And thank you to all of our administrators. The school year is off to a great start. Things are going well. I know we have a lot going on. So just thank you again for all of what you do.
I want to echo what Ms. Turner Giles said. Just congratulations to all the One Nelson Award winners and Mr. Mansfield. Thank you for everything that you do and Mr. Cash does. That is truly yeoman's work. And it's, you know, you don't do it for recognition, you do it because there's a need. And that's really cool. It's not, it doesn't happen that often anymore. And I also love it when we recognize students for doing good things. That's my favorite part of what we do here. And this month is kindness month also, right? What's that?
Kindness and anti-bullying.
Kindness and anti-bullying. And so I'm really glad that we celebrate that. I've seen a lot of posts from the schools, from the school system's Facebook page for that. It's really good. And I'm just really appreciative of everything that all the teachers and all the administrators do to bring, to make us have such a successful start to the school year.
I just want to echo all that was said, all the thanks that went out to everybody. And I appreciate the ones that are in attendance tonight and all the student athletes and all the students that participated in the state fair and those things. And we appreciate you all and happy kindness month.
So thank you all for being here tonight. It's good to see everybody. As you noticed, Mrs. Claire is not here. So you drew the short stick, and you've got me leading the meeting. So let's have a little grace, I'm a little rusty on it. But I do want to say congratulations to the One Nelson winners and the custodians. George, Caesar, and I both went through the same schools together when we were younger. We have lots of good custodian stories and how meaningful they were at our school when we were little. There were some pretty incredible people that had big impacts on our life at that time. Same thing with you, Mr. Mansfield. I think, you know, when our daughter was in school, she worked with you. And I think the ability to be such a positive impact and a positive role model on so many kids, I don't think that you begin to have any idea the impact you have. And we thank you. That's it. We look forward to a good meeting tonight. Yeah, congratulations to all of our state fair winners. We had a best in show, it sounds like, so really good job there. Important dates we're going to check out for the coming few days. Yep, and I will just make a note. Farm to school week, which is ending this week, is for us, a rural community with a lot of farms in our area, this is a really important week. And I think it's one that I'm glad to see that we recognize and the whole farm to table, farm to school experience because that is a basis of our economy here in our community.
Yeah, and Ms. Canal and her cafeteria, school nutrition teams have worked really, really hard to take a fresh look at how we continue to promote this and make it interesting, exciting, and bring those experiences and continue those experiences in our buildings. And so we appreciate their effort. And not only is it farm to school week today was the crunch heard around the Commonwealth. So I know Mr. Cargill really worked hard to get out to the two elementary schools to really kind of document those experiences. And it's a lot of fun, not only for our students to participate in, but also our staff. We have, October is a super busy month with just a lot of different things going on. Rockfish will host the Zombie Mash. That's a kind of a school dance and a safe trunk or treat opportunity for students to be in an area that's lit, it's safe, and it's a fun experience along with, I think, if they have a 5K or a run that's connected to that. We also have asynchronous learning day on Monday. A quick reminder, tomorrow is the last day of the marking period. For, we've gone through the first marking period of the school year, and it seems like it's a blur, so we have that coming up. And 13th is an asynchronous day. And then the following week is a professional development day for our staff, but it is our student success night. So this is an opportunity to bring our parents, our guardians, our families to come in and really learn from our staff and our teachers about, you know, where the success is lying for their students. And in many instances, for our students to show that off to their families. And so we're excited about that. Along the lines of kindness month, Unity Day is a widely celebrated. We've seen two different dates, but we're celebrating it on the 22nd. So wearing orange to celebrate Unity Day and the Stop Bullying Day. On the 23rd is our One Nelson Trunk or Treat. So this is always a pretty big deal every year, and it takes place out in front of our middle and the high school. The middle school is having a dance that evening. So there is just a whole bunch of excitement taking place. Well, that evening, but right after school. Because the wonderful part about that dance is our students who, they're then able to get on the activity bus. So they don't have to worry about the rides to get home or the rides to get there. It's kind of built in for them. So really appreciate that. We have Red Ribbon Week coming up, which is a campaign for a drug-free America. And that is the 23rd of October through the 31st of October. The 28th of October is First Responders Day. You know, a couple of weeks ago, at a football game, we recognized our first responders at halftime. And that always gets a big celebration on behalf of our fans and our community. And we just appreciate everything that they do. On October 29th, it's Wear Red. So it's coupled with the Red Ribbon Week. It's Wear Red to show your solidarity against drugs. On October 30th, and I did this wrong, it should be November 1st. So that is my fault, I typed that in wrong. So October 30th and November 1st is Something Rotten Junior. So that's where our middle school musical takes place. And it's always a great amount of fun. Why is there a day in between? Because Halloween is taking place on Friday. So we know that that is a tough competitor. So they're going to have Something Rotten take place on that Thursday and that Saturday, correct? Okay, so I will make sure that I correct this also and promote it. I know I've just seen some of the advertisements start going out. So we're excited about that. Halloween on the 31st, Livingston is hosting something, another safe opportunity for our kids, all community kids, whether they're Nelson County public school kids. It is for all of our community families and kids to be able to enjoy. Another safe way to be able to do that down in the heart of Livingston. And Chamber of Commerce will be there, a lot of different agencies will be there. Daylight Saving Time, this is where we get to fall back an hour. That will take place on Sunday, early Sunday morning. And then National School Psychology Week will be November 3rd through the 7th. And then, believe it or not, we will be right back at another school board meeting shortly thereafter. And we have Election Day on the 4th, which is a student holiday. And then Veterans Day, which is always a big, each of our schools does something unique to them where they celebrate, recognize Veterans Day. And then World Kindness Day is on the 13th. And I believe our school board meeting is on the 12th, I think. So we're coming around to that. And then, as we like to also indicate that several of our board members will be attending the VSBA Annual Conference. So that will be an exciting time for some of our members.
Thank you, thank you. And I think you can just keep on rolling.
I can keep on rolling?
Because we have comments from the superintendent.
Okay. You know, let me, this one is not showing it, so my apologies. So we're just going to do that. Okay, so Homecoming, as we kind of mentioned briefly, took place last week. It was a really great crowd at our football game. And just appreciate the spirit and the feeling that takes place when we're able to bring our community together and have such a great experience. Didn't hurt that our football team won 56 to 12. That certainly never hurts. But I think the great thing is you had our alumni, former marching gavs who were there performing. We had our marching gavs who were able to play their set. We had our cheerleaders. We had our young elementary color guard who performed. And so it was just really a full circle opportunity for all those different types of involvement in different groups. And so we also had our, I think this was the fourth or third, Homecoming Tailgate. So where all of our employees and their families were invited to come out, get some hot dogs, cheeseburgers, snacks, and then have an opportunity to go to the game shortly thereafter. And so it's always fun to be able, are we freaking out over there? Are you just taking that off? Okay. It's always a good opportunity to be able to have a lot. All of our staff have a chance to be together and with their families and just enjoy each other. You know, we don't always have a chance for a Rockfish staff to kind of come together, other than convocation with our Thai River or our middle school staff. So it was really great. As I mentioned, we have our end of our marking period coming up tomorrow. So those missing assignments or just time to make sure that we have all of our i's dotted and our t's crossed. Our teachers will have an opportunity to finalize those grades, and students have a holiday on the asynchronous day on Monday. We do have the Valley of the Seven Stars Festival that's taking place. We had a lot of event attendees start to come in today. I just want to thank the sheriff's office, the event organizers, our SROs, Mr. Taylor Ashley, all of our bus drivers. He did, Mr. Ashley did a phenomenal job communicating out to our drivers about what to expect, different strategies to go about, making sure we navigate this appropriately. And yes, there is increased traffic. There is increased flow of traffic, which has its own obstacles and at times annoyances, but I just appreciate all the work. I communicated quite frequently with Sheriff Embry today, just making sure, you know, having those assurances that we are good to go, but we want to be mindful. We put communications out to our families a week ago just to make sure that they understood that we're aware that this is taking place, but we have taken precautions and working with these organizers to understand that, yes, there'll be increased traffic, but we still believe that we can operate without those disruptions with maybe a couple delays here or there. I think our buses came in at 8:10. That's a pretty good gap when it comes to the amount of population that will be here. And it sounds like the afternoons went pretty well. So we feel good, but that's not to hesitate to say, please plan accordingly, leave earlier. There are some crossovers that are not available. And, you know, in talking with some people, I had to go all the way down to the Heritage Center to make a U-turn. Yes, that is one of those annoyances. But it's all to make sure that the flow is as good[1774.88] as it can possibly be with that many people. So we just appreciate the patience, and we appreciate the work of everybody trying to make sure that we do this in the right way, and also still to be able to maintain the value and the priorities of education, and to really be able to continue with the importance of that. I will remain in communication with Sheriff Embry and Mr. Ashley with transportation and other individuals, just to make sure that we're paying attention to some things. I really appreciate SROs being willing. We'll have two SROs at Ty River tomorrow, just the increased presence. Sheriff Embry will be over in the mornings over at Ty River, just to make sure that, you know, increased presence is always good when we have increased traffic flow. So I appreciate the willingness to come together and work together on that. The State Fair, you know, it's hard to believe it's here, and it's, we've had so many competitions and participants in that, and want to say congratulations to all of our students who participate in that. We were able to host a home cross-country meet, and just was really, really thrilled with that, and just the feedback that we've gotten, and wanted to say thank you to the hard work of Mr. Greg Bowens, and I think it was Creation Appreciation who kind of rebuilt that. And then just talking to some of our student athletes and our coaches, that the other teams were really impressed with the course and just appreciated that. So for me, that's really gratifying to be able to know that we're hosting and able to provide that environment for our student athletes. Golf has been underway and almost, I think, concluded. I think the last match we may have, other than those who maybe are participating in post-play. Volleyball, football, and cheer have really gone, and again, now we're heading into the middle school musical time, and all the activities that really start to really remind you that we are in the thick of school. And so just want to say thank you so much for everybody putting their time in for that. And as that leads us into all the various district-wide or division-wide items that take place at this time, Ms. Irvin is, you know, has been knee-deep in the annual report, and this is where it finalizes all the expenditures, particularly from the previous year. And so that takes a lot of effort and a lot of focus to be able to do that, and we appreciate that. And there's also the closeout of the fiscal year 2023-2024 awards that happened on September 30th. So a lot of effort in closing out those grants and those awards. In terms of instruction, like I said, we're right in the middle of it. We are, we've done vows testing, that hasn't been without its own challenges, but not necessarily on our end, but our teachers have really handled that well. Great deal of effort in collaborating with Virginia Career Works through PVCC, had some really good conversations where we're trying to expand our work-based learning, and those types of skill base that are of interest to our students, our community, and really trying to, and I appreciate Dr. Yarzabinski's role in really working through, trying to expand our student bodies, opportunities for work-based learning and workforce development that gives back not only to Nelson but this area. We have been conducting, our instructional team, some walkthroughs and collaborative walkthroughs at each of the schools to really be able to identify the learning environments and learn what's taking place, and we've spent a great deal of time, and we will continue to do so today, to talk about our student performance and what goes into assisting our students and our instruction. And so we will continue to kind of report back on that, but a part of that is to see what's taking place in the classroom. And so I also encourage our school board, if you ever want to join us in going on some learning walks, we would invite you to do that. We had an opportunity to have a guest speaker, motivational speaker, through the No Legs, No Problem, Rohan Murphy was a really engaging speaker who went out to each of our schools, but also had a family engagement night, so that was a fun time. And being able to work in, with our, finalizing our Talented and Gifted Program, which Mr. Balaico, we're asking that you guys approve that in an action item, but he does have some information that if you show, want to learn a little bit more, he's more than happy to share that with you. But also just going through and just really evaluating and working with our teachers, and getting back to understanding the experiences of our teachers, working and making sure everything is aligned to our goals and using our data to drive that. And then that last bottom-right picture is our Building and Trades students working hard to build a home that will go back to a Nelson family. So we think, you know, we just appreciate the efforts in being able to apply those life skills and employable skills to build something and then give it back to our community. Our pupil personnel, that becomes a little difficult to say sometimes. Early childhood special education teachers through the preschool initiative and speech-language pathologists, we all convened through JMU and the T-Tech iPop, a lot of different letters, a lot of different initials, and basically inclusive placement opportunities. How do we support our sped students and our young learners in the best possible way, and using the Building Blocks Program to do so. Class observations, class observations take place at the younger grades, and it's really to understand the learning environments, what's taking place. Cisna applications, working through all the different reports that we have to submit to stay aligned with the VDOE expectations. Planning phrases for the Special Olympics Feet Meet, and this is something that's near and dear to my heart. I think all these opportunities, we participated in the Little Feet Meet, so our much younger special needs students, and now really bringing it to a little bit the older age group, and I think Ms. Roydinger and Dr. Simmons and everybody who's working on this, we're going to host that, it'll be at our high school, and it's a, it's a Special Olympics meet to be able to apply the adaptive and inclusivity that takes place with that, and it's such a wonderful event. Also, beginning the Child Find Opportunities, you'll see some advertisements going out for development, and that'll take place on October, October 20th by appointment only. And we continue to do the Special Education Help Desk. Human Resources, Ms. Chode had a wonderful opportunity through Grand Canyon University to learn more about available programs to support our staff and interested in becoming teachers, and so it's always great to have those collaborative and supportive, and it was all paid for through Grand Canyon, and to be able to have that professional growth opportunities that we hope to translate back to our staff is always wonderful. Recognizing our new NCPS staff, as we welcomed with the reception prior to the September meeting, you all had a chance to meet a lot of our new staff. And a smiling face that you see in the bottom-left corner is being able to onboard Jen Pollard as our new HR assistant. Right now, she's doing double duty, she's going back and forth between the middle school bookkeeper job and HR assistant, so we just want to thank her efforts in being able to take that on and be able to do a lot with that. We had speaker at the last meeting about Head Start, and where we're kind of absorbing those responsibilities of Head Start with United Way kind of being that, the money aspect of it, and it's challenging, it's something that's new to all of us, and it's something that we'll continue to work through, but it has been a challenge, and we'll continue to work through that, because we do want to be able to provide the best that we can for our at-risk younger students, but we also want to be able to bill and to be able to maintain everything that we have. We also submitted new teacher program data, so this is a big report data submission timeframe. In terms of technology, continue to work with Lead Innovators, there's a group of our teachers who are always trying to kind of continue to push our instruction and our approaches forward in developing an AI plan. Artificial intelligence, we've been talking about it for quite a while, there's initiatives behind it, we know that it's here, it's not going away, but how do we harness all the advantages that it affords us and be able to use it for our staff, and how do we bring and guide our students along with that in the world that we know is everywhere, and how do we equip our students to be successful and apply it to, you know, whether it's college or our working life or just life in general? And so it's, I appreciate the work that our, our staff is doing with that. Looking to expand our work with Google Workspace, also working to develop technology hardware, software requirements for each of our positions, what are the requirements of each of our positions? Cybersecurity training, I think even if you read in the newspaper today, schools are becoming bigger targets for cybersecurity attacks, and so I appreciate the work of just continuing to train. You know, each week we might get an email that like, this does not look right, we've, you know, we send it to Mike and Marshall and Darren, and they take a look at it and say, yep, thank you for recognizing this, and they're able to address it immediately. So we appreciate that. And technology has been kind of included in a lot of the renovation process, to be able to, when we're renovating our building, to bring it up to where we need it to be technology-wise, so we appreciate that. And NCPS received a state and local cybersecurity grant, and so that's also a way for us to continue to improve our work in this. Maintenance, beginning, believe it or not, smo, snow removal bids. When we have our big snows, we are, we are small enough, we're not able to push the snow in all different areas, we need some assistance, and so we, we put the removal process out to bid, and that will take place this month, because you never know in this area when we're going to need that, so I appreciate Mr. Campbell and his team working through that. Also, busy preparing the grounds for homecoming leading up to it, so a lot of time was spent doing that. Met with Mosley and the IT team, so the collaborative effort to be able to work through the camera upgrades, constant overseeing of the renovation process, and that has been probably the majority of a lot of the efforts on behalf of the maintenance, but also preparing for upcoming yearly fire inspection, which everybody loves that, just ask every elementary teacher. Transportation and Safety and Security, 48 field trips in September, so we are getting back into traveling to different areas and using those field trips to promote learning experiences, but also competitions and all various types of activities. Also, transportation, been busy coordinating trips to the State Fair, marching band competitions, cheerleading, all of those activities. Mechanics have also, you see that right-hand picture, that mechanics have also been hard at work the last few weeks conducting first round of business, or bus inspections. So every 45 days, our buses are required to undergo a thorough inspection, and so that's always good to know. We've talked about our aging fleet, we're going to be getting new buses, and there's that process that happens in between, you know, the better maintained our buses are, the longer we can use them, and so these individuals are integral piece to that. And Taylor and Les were able to go out to all schools to identify and plan for labeling exterior doors. School nutrition, planning for Farm to School Week, that's taken a lot of work, and so we appreciate, but also Ms. Canell and her crew provided dinner for the family engagement night with Mr. Rohan Murphy, so we appreciate that. They are now, so next, October's a big school nutrition month, so this week is Farm to School Week, next week is the National School Lunch Week, so that'll take place on next week, so they're already planning and ordering and getting ready for that. Continue to work with Virginia Food for Virginia Kids Cohort, that's a mouthful, and Chef and Foundation on Menu Development, again, that focus on trying to get back to as much scratch as we can and as much local as we can to be able to provide that. And one of the fun things they do is they do a taste test Tuesday, and it started back earlier in the month, and we use that time to try new recipes, and so a lot of the kids, when I meet with the kids, they're like, we love that, we want to be able to see, and a lot, especially the stuff they really like to eat, they want to see that back, and so that's always a lot of fun. This month was Woodle, yeah, Woodles, and that was at the middle and the high school, chicken rice and broccoli casserole at the Ty River and roasted veggies at Rockfish. So I'll be very interested to hear about the feedback that they have on those items, and currently working on the supper snack applications for the year. Meals served, 14,181 for breakfast in September, 21,045 lunches, we're just now getting going in some of the remediation aspects, and so 10 of the suppers that we send home primarily to high school. So we will anticipate that number going up now that we start into the remediation time period. Community engagement, there's been a lot of different things that we take a great deal of pride in involving our communities, you see it either through our social media or Facebook, or bringing our families together, or just doing something as fun as having bubbles on Friday, you know, and as our parents are dropping their kids off and they see it's a fun time and a welcoming environment to go into, and it's Kindness Month, so really making sure that we're promoting that all throughout the month, but really not letting it stop right there and that we want it to continue on beyond that. And then last but not least, the fun Homecoming Tailgate that we had, just really appreciate everybody for taking time to come out to it and enjoy it, it was a fun time, we appreciate the individuals who took the time to cook, and so we appreciate everything, and I had the pleasure of being able to provide that information, so thank you, if you have any questions.
A lot going on.
Yes.
Thank you. So no comments tonight, I think our student representatives were blessed to have them, and they're super busy, so they were not able to attend tonight for some other activities that they're involved in. Do we have any comments from the public at this point? Anything out there? Okay, we do have some time, is there anyone here that would like to speak? All right, so we're now down to the consent agenda, within that are the meeting minutes, second reading from the August 14th meeting, as well as the registers from September 2025. Any questions? If no questions, then can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. So on items for information, the first thing are our meeting minutes, it's the first reading from our September 11th meeting. When you get a chance, if you can go in, check those out, if there, anything, anything that needs to change in regards to that, please let Dr. Hester know. Unless, Mr. Campbell, if you can come, give us an update and introduce your guest.
So I'll get everyone set up on page two. And then I will turn the floor over to Ms. Colburn and Mr. Hall to follow up some questions with regarding the water-cooled chiller. Again, I provided the map for quick reference. We met with Mosley and the IT team September 25th to discuss the camera replacements that goes along with the network and equipment upgrades. As Dr. Hester said, we're, we're trying to include as much networking and for the cybersecurity and everything in this renovation as possible. The brick contractors are transitioning to washing the walls, they're along with repointing the mortar, so if you happen to see the walls soaking wet like we did the other morning, it's, there's a reason for that, you know, it hadn't been rained, and we're like, wow, the wall's wet, so they're washing the walls, so. They're still in, the contractors are still in the upper D-section and lower D-section, which is the Alpha Wing. They're, right now, we're scheduled, they're scheduled to turn that area back over to us November the 7th, and then they will be moving, transitioning to the next set of classrooms to start renovating. And I just included a bunch of pictures, because again, those, it's, it's a lot of work going on above the ceiling that we won't see once the ceilings get put back, so, but it's, I thought it was important to show of the amount of work that's going on in our school that, quite frankly, you won't see once it's over with, but much-needed improvements. Some of the stuff you can see is, I included some pictures, they put some new handrails up, some around the window wells, that is on the Alpha Wing there, and they also, we had to put a new sidewalk in because that fresh air unit there, it kind of, that's where our existing sidewalk went by the ticket booth, that's where they, we had to put the new fresh air unit, and so they had to make a new sidewalk to come out of them, set, their set of doors, they'd come by the gym and then tie into our existing sidewalks. I thought they did a real neat job wrapping that up, and they just recently put up the fence, they tied into the existing fence around the propane tanks, and all of that is going to be behind fence areas, so no access to it, so. So anyway, any questions? Know it was very brief, but they're still in the same section they were last month, so a lot of work's going on. You're welcome, I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Colburn and Mr. Hall now.
Hello.
Hello, back again. And this time I brought a technical assistant with me about Bobby Hall, and he has over 35 years of experience in HVAC, and he has worked in these schools for 20-plus years. So two questions that were asked last month, well, the first question was, was this, was this chiller, the water-cooled chiller started? Yes, it was started at Carrier, Bobby can tell you more about how they do that. The second question, was it measured? Yes, representative from Carrier came out and measured. We did not have to cut or take apart the chiller at all, we took apart the door, and we did have to take apart some of the ductwork, but not anything with the chiller itself. So, but we did have Lyle Sutherland from Carrier here, and he measured and he said it would be tight, and clearly it was a little tighter than he had thought, and so we obviously removed the work around the door, and the chiller itself was not taken apart. So since we met last time, Carrier and Honeywell have been in a lot of discussions, and Honeywell, excuse me, Honeywell received a letter from Carrier, which we then gave to Mr. Campbell and Mosley to review. I'll let Bobby explain this letter about the chiller in a more, he can talk technical and down-to-earth, it's really great. He, if he can explain it to me, then I'm like, you can explain it to anybody, so I brought him to do that.
Not too glamorous, but they, they're recommending to install a, it's not an engineering review, but it's a, you know, initial report to install a chill water storage tank in conjunction, so it's a component to the hydraulic system, is what they're recommending. So we're, we're taking that and recommending to have that, an engineering review performed by your current architect.
They're saying that the loop is short?
Yeah.
And that the tonnage on the air handling units was reduced since the chiller was put in. So we felt like you entrusted Mosley, as your architect and engineer of record, that they should announce, make an analysis and make a recommendation of that, and then come back to us and to Carrier with what they feel is the best course of action. Then we will then discuss it, obviously whatever they come back with, with you and with administration. You look confused.
Now, I'm just, I'm the person that we need to break it down.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
Yeah.
So basically, I'm saying, wait.
It's an additional component.
It's additional component that helps the water, so there's much flow.
It's a load buffer. So it, so there's not a, so Carrier is recommending a certain amount of water volume in the system that currently has not been met. So this, this tank or additional component will, will meet that minimum standard.
And that was found out after the initial installment was done?
After, after the initial installation, and since the installation, there was, you know, obviously, a renovation project that took place as well. So there's, this is a separate project than the renovation project.
So the, so the extra capacity tank, is that for peak loading, or is it for all the time?
It's for all the time. It would be in, it would be.
I mean, are we putting it in because it won't handle the peak load? Or are we putting it in because it won't handle the load, the consistent load?
What Carrier is suggesting that they, there is cycling, there's short cycling going on, and the machine cannot offload as, as fast or as much as it needs to be to be able to, you know, react, because the loop volume is short.
So is this a piece that is attached to the current chiller, or it is?
It's attached, well, it's attached to the hydronic system. So it's not, not, it works in conjunction or tandem with the chiller, but not connected, so to speak. With the piping, yes, but not.
Not in the room?
Not, it's in the same room, and so, and it's connected to the water piping, if you will, but not necessarily to the, to the exact machine.
Gotcha. So a regular chiller would not need this extra component?
Assum, assuming that the loop volume met that minimum standard, then that's correct.
Okay.
So I think, Ms. Colburn, you said something about the tonnage of the unit had been reduced?
Yes. The rooftop, Bobby, against the air handling unit, when we put the chiller in, it was a like-for-like replacement of what was already there. Then Mosley was hired and designed the building, and they reduced the tonnage of the air handling unit one and took air handling two completely out. That was their design.
The building design was altered.
Was changed. Carrier is thus saying, am I right, is thus saying because of that change?
Well, in part.
He's so much technical.
They didn't make, they didn't make, they didn't make it clear. They just, they just recognized that the fact that there's not enough loop volume to meet their minimum standard to operate the chiller. And it's not, it's an industry standard, it's not a manufacturer's standard, if you will.
All right. I thought, so the chiller that was installed, or the building had to be, the doors had to be taken out so the chiller could be installed, I thought that was part of the renovation project.
We were hired to do that with the end of the grant running, and that was, you know, before, I think Mosley was a hundred percent under contract with the district. So we were trying to use end-of-COVID S R funds.
We had phase one and then phase two.
Gotcha, okay.
So we put in the chiller that was this like-for-like replacement of the chiller that was, that was there. And I know it's a different size, but it was the same tonnage.
Right.
But obviously, over the twenty years that chiller was designed, it changed, was the sustainability things that happened. They changed the size of them and the shapes. They're not the exact same chiller, but it was the same load, one hundred and seventy-one tons.
Same capacity.
Same capacity. It may not look the exact same, but it was a like-for-like replacement. And then Mosley came in and was hired by you all and designed the system that you currently have. So now they're recommending that we put in this tank. So we're letting Mosley, who have the education, and that's just what they do, make the decision if Carrier's correct or incorrect.
To validate Carrier's recommendation.
And so the, the loop was found to be short, or it was de-rated? Or like, we think it was more capacity to start with, and then when Mosley investigated, they found out that it was less? Is that what we're saying?
I don't think that, I'm not sure if, I'm not, I'm not aware of Mosley's investigation.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what's happening.
Yeah, so a sequence of events would be, they, Mosley made an initial select, machine selection and, and manufacturer. And so we ran on that narrative, installed the machine. Normal procedure is to perform a manufacturer's factory startup on site. That was unsuccessful of many attempts. So some things were done, tried, and tried to, you know, adjust and, and account for it. It was unsuccessful. So they said, so they, you know, stepped back and said, hey, what's really going on here? So the looped, the volume was measured, came up short, and said, hey, you know, you guys need to have, you know, this minimum standard, or this minimum loop volume as an industry standard. That wasn't met. There was some alterations to that loop as well through that renovation process. We weren't aware, I mean, I don't think anybody was aware at the time, because this, this project was done prior to the renovation. So as we were approaching or getting close to being completion, I think the renovation was still underway, whatever stage it was in, however. But, but to summarize, loop, they concluded that the loop volume was short, and they're suggesting a, a storage tank to make up for that difference.
So, look at these. So if we have a replacement unit that's the same size as, size as the old unit, and the flow was correct for the old unit, why isn't the flow correct for the new unit if it's more efficient?
So, so again, the loop volume was altered during the renovation process?
Okay, so let's stop there. So you're saying we increased the usage on our end for more use on this chiller?
Decreased.
Decreased. So now we need more water for lesser?
So that's, that's, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So the, so two things. The, that chiller serves a piece of air distribution equipment that delivers air throughout that space that it serves.
Lo-Tec.
Which is the Lo-Tec area. So that capacity of that air handler was decreased. Okay? So now, now that chiller is not at the same needs of that chiller, capacity is no longer the same. Because the air handler was changed. And in addition to, one was also removed.
Right.
So, and, and who, where did those decisions come from? Shortening the loop, removing the air handler, and decreasing the size of it?
I think that was in the renovation process, in the engineering process of that renovation post our project.
Post your project?
Correct. Our project was twenty-twenty-three, was when we purchased the chiller. It was delivered in twenty-twenty-four, or twenty-five? There were five.
Well, so.
Yeah, it's a year to make it.
And I'm, I'm sorry that I'm asking so many pointed questions, but we've been in partnership with you all for a long time at great expense, and one of the reasons that we have stayed with you all is so we have continuity with all of these things, and now we're being told that, that continuity fell to the wayside or something. So I'm just trying to figure out why, you know, first of all, let me, who's going to be bearing the cost of this extra tank? That's, that's the first thing.
So we, we did not make the initial selection of the chiller, and Honeywell was not contracted to do that, and then we were not contracted to install a storage tank that Carrier is now suggesting. And then we were not privy, or no, I don't think anybody knew that what the, what the future design, at the time, the future design of the renovation project was going to be. Because that, those changes were made after our project had placed or purchased.
I think responsibility is being punted, and I don't mean this in the wrong, but being punted to Mosley is what it sounds like. If they did not create a design.
We could go and make sure that Jim entirely, would be a part of the conversation.
Yeah.
And that's why we wanted them to have the letter and them to say, yes, you need a tank, or no, you don't need a tank. And they're mechanical engineers.
Sure.
And that's what they do. So we put a like-for-like chiller in, and then the specifications for the building changed, and now Carrier is saying there's not enough load, so you got to put this other tank so that you can equal what the load would have been if we had it in the other spot.
I understand.
And to take it simplified even more, what I think you're saying is, you did your responsibility, you replaced it, Mosley came and designed something that didn't match what was existing there, potentially.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
So there's a communication failure between you all and Mosley, is what I'm hearing?
We received a letter from Mosley before, they were on record, they were not hired by Nelson. They did a recap, they told us which unit, they suggested we purchase, which we didn't disagree with. It did say in there, there's a line that says, it is ultimately Honeywell's decision to select this, because we are not under contract with Nelson. But they did recommend this one hundred and seventy-one, which was a like-for-like replacement, which is a normal replacement. We've done many replacements for you. You take off the old unit, you put on the new unit. We did the exact same thing with the air-cooled chillers outside. Okay? So went off, put one in. Water-cooled, they went off, put one in.
Yeah, because the footprint of the building hadn't changed.
And changed.
That's why we're all looking puzzled.
Right, so they added.
Just to add, just to add to that, there's, so there is some cooling, mechanical cooling load that was removed from that chiller and placed on other types of equipment.
Okay.
Brand-new, that was not previously installed.
So they added DX cooling to.
Let me make sure the language is clear.
They added DX cooling in the Lo-Tec center.
So, so there's some DOAS equipment that was, that's now DX, that used to be, used to be being taken care of the, from the chiller prior to that new design, but now it's on other types of equipment, this brand new.
And I know we're not going to fix this tonight, I'm just, we're just trying to understand what's going on.
And we're trying to like, be as honest and transparent as possible.
How many, so removing that air handler from the roof, the one unit that was removed, did we experience a loss of tonnage by doing that?
It was.
Or was it transferred to another unit?
It's transferred to another unit. It was off, it's shed, or done a different way.
Right.
Done a different way, yeah. So in, in that case, in that particular case, it was done by, not through the loop, that's why the loop volume was reduced. So water, water volume essentially was reduced. So, so it was being done a different way through different equipment.
Okay. So, so where do we stand now? Mosley has the letter.
Mosley has the letter, and they will make the decision.
Okay.
They will say, Carrier, no, your chiller should be sufficient and should be able to cool this area, or they will say, no, we need to add this tank.
Okay.
Then we will move forward with the recommendation and with talking with Dr. Hester and Mr. Campbell.
Okay, so the last, one of the parts of the other conversation we had last month, the shutdown and startup so you could test, test how it run, where, where are we with that part of it?
We have to be on hold until we, you know, I've, last month, to be honest with you, it's been major discussions between Honeywell and Carrier. And then Carrier has said, we're going to write this letter, and we're filing up the letter this week.
Okay, but you, you were saying that there has to be, you know, a cool day, you know, or?
Right. So now that we have the letter, now that it's getting to be out of season, we can certainly now make those decisions and work forward. We had a temporary chiller hooked up.
Well, with a four-pipe system in there, we should be able to.
Right.
Take advantage of holidays or weekends to be able to test this thing when it's time, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we're making sure that if they decide to move forward, if they decide to move forward with the tank, what's the lead time? How long will it take? We do not want to be in March figuring this out. We want it to finish.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm getting, that's what I'm getting at.
Absolutely.
If we're coming back in the warm weather.
We do not want to be where we were in August. Absolutely.
Yeah, then we can't properly test it or whatever.
Right. So we want decision from Mosley, and then we will move forward as rapidly as possible with what they say.
And we met with Mosley yesterday on the site.
Okay.
So they was able to look at what we're dealing with.
Okay, okay.
Hopefully have, give us guidance on where we need to move forward, how we need to move forward.
That's good to hear.
And that was Jim Henderson, oh my gosh.
Wiley.
Tyler Wiley and.
And Scott O'Connell.
Scott O'Connell, yeah, Scott O'Connell. So the three of them. Scott has been on-site with the renovations quite frequently, or most of the time, and then Jim and Tyler have been a part of the planning process. So we, we're in communication with them, and we'll bring them in. And they're, they're the experts on the design. So we're waiting, awaiting their decision.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, it's so confusing.
Appreciate the update. Thank you all very much. Okay, now we're on to an update on school improvement plans.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me some time this evening. So I get the privilege of sharing our school improvement goals. First off, I'd like to thank our school teams and our school principals and leaders for analyzing data to develop their SMART goals. So I'll start with the high school, and they have goals that fall in each domain as each school does, that's required by the VDOE. So domain one is academic supports. So the English department will implement the SOLs and relevant teaching strategies to reach at least eighty-seven percent overall and, of course, pass rate. Students using the work keys, which is an alternative assessment, will achieve ninety-five percent or higher pass rate for the writing assessments. The second goal for domain one for the high school, overall and, of course, math SOL scores, will reach at least a ninety-two percent pass rate, as indicated by the Virginia SOL assessments. And their third goal for the academic supports domain is that NCHS will have a combined science score that will reach at least seventy-nine percent on the end, of course, pass rates. For their second domain, which is staffing supports, they will continue to work to recruit, hire, and retain one-hundred percent highly qualified teachers and support staff. For their third domain, which is organizational support, learning supports, they're going to create and implement a master schedule, which they've done, where all students will be provided an individualized schedule that incorporates optimal and differentiated learning time for each and every one of their students, and of course, that will be led and supported by highly qualified teachers and staff. Finally, their fourth domain, which is a school climate goal, they're going to work to decrease chronic absenteeism rate by five percent, which would put it at nine-point-seven percent or less by the end of the school year. And they're going to offer some seat recovery time to make sure that that goal stays on target. For the middle school, academic supports domain one, they're going to work to have an overall combined English score that will increase by three percent, and which would put them at an eighty percent pass rate overall on the state learning assessments. And students with disability pass rates will demonstrate growth on SOL assessments by increasing pass rate on the reading and math SOL by ten percent, or by meeting state accreditation pass rates in both math and English. Their third goal for academic supports at the middle school is an overall combined science score that will increase by five percent or to seventy-two percent from the previous year on the science SOL. For staffing supports, the middle school will also work to recruit and retain one-hundred percent highly qualified teachers and support staff throughout the school year. For their third domain, which is organizational learning supports, the middle school is going to create and implement a master schedule where one-hundred percent of their students will also be placed in an individualized schedule that incorporates optimal and differentiated learning time through each and every school day, and that will also be led by highly qualified teachers and staff. And their climate and support goal there for domain four would be to decrease the overall chronic absenteeism from twelve-point-nine percent, which it was this past year, to twelve percent or lower for this school year. Moving on to Rockfish, for domain one, academic supports, they're going to work to improve their ELA SOL pass rate to seventy-four percent, which is a three percent increase from last year's rate of seventy-one percent. They're also going to work to improve their math SOL pass rate to a seventy-nine percent, which is also a three percent increase from last year, which would put them at seventy-six percent overall. For domain two, staffing supports, Rockfish staff will receive at least two professional developments on the use of Permethion boards during this school year. For domain three, or. For Domain Three, Organization and Learning Supports, they are going to incorporate a win block in all of their classrooms, providing students with at least forty-five minutes to work on interventions and enrichment opportunities, and WIN stands for What I Need. And Domain Four, which is School Climate and Supports, they're gonna work to decrease chronic absenteeism to eight percent or lower, which is a two percent decrease from the ten-point-two rate that they were at this past school year. And moving on to Thai River, for Academic Supports, Domain One, they're gonna work to increase pass rate on the Reading Standards of Learning Assessment by five percent, which would put them at a seventy-four percent overall. And they are also gonna work on their math standards of learning assessments and increase that by five percent as well, which would put them at eighty-one percent overall. For Staffing Supports, ninety percent of teachers will participate in a minimum of six professional development opportunities that will be identified by staff requests and/or by the leadership team at Thai River. For Organizational and Learning Supports, their goal is to increase the pass rate on fifth grade science standards of learning test by five percent, which would put them at a seventy-one percent overall in that area. And finally, Domain Four for Thai River, which is School Climate and Supports, they're gonna work to increase their community relationships by collaborating and having a minimum of five events and/or activities with community partners this school year. So again, those are the goals. Do you have any questions? Again, I thank our leadership teams at the schools and our awesome staff, so in order to get to these goals, just so everybody knows, our school ta, school staffs are placed in teams, uh, and within those teams, they look at previous year's data as well as years past, and then they all work together to build goals, and then they kind of focus on and monitor those goals throughout each and every school year with the leadership team at each building, along with district leadership, and then within their squad teams within their buildings. So...
Succeed.
Yeah, and you'll see a theme, you know, as, as you should be piecing things together starting in August and September, and then with, um, Mr. Blake's presentation and Dr. Yarzabinski, the theme of presenting all the data to show where we are now, um, and how it connects to our division level goals, and how our division level goals are connected to the school board goals, and all driven by our data, and then how that, um, aligns all of what we do to each other. And so there, there's, it's been very, very deliberate, very, very targeted, um, to show that alignment and to show how it's working, where we are, and where we want to go.
And again, and certainly we're moving... As Dr. Yarzabinski had mentioned last time, overall SOL scores are thirty-fourth out of a hundred and thirty-one school divisions, so we are certainly continuing to make gains each, each and every year, and we're looking to keep moving that, uh, forward going into this school year. And as I conclude, as Dr. Hester mentioned, I appreciate, uh, you looking at the five-year gifted education plan, and if you have any questions regarding that, I'll be happy to come back up if you need me to do so. So thank you all.
Appreciate it. Great, thank you.
Dr. Yarzabinski.
As Dr. Yarzabinski approaches, um, there are two items in your packet. Um, one is a very exciting, um, report, uh, with a lot of rich data, and the other is a, um, a presentation that you will also see. Oh, but, nope, just kidding, it's right here.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Update on preliminary results for our new accountability system. Um, so I guess this is what we are scored or even judged on, but I will say it does not measure or tell our whole story, measure all our outcomes or tell our whole story. Doesn't measure the culture and climate that is, uh, at each school. It doesn't measure the energy, the effort, and passion of our educators and our administrators. Does not measure all of the successes and exceptionalities of our students, and it does not measure the collective effort of the Nelson community, and I would be remiss if I did not identify those as all contributing factors to our success. That being said, a quick review, I don't think we've covered this new model for quite a while, so just to refresh your memory, um, we have slightly different models for each level, elementary, middle, and high, um, similar components of each, though. The elementary model is comprised of three realms, mastery, consisting of success in SOL and VAP in reading, math, and science, in addition to English language progress. Also correlated to SOL success are growth measures, and these are gonna be relegated just to growth in reading and math. Together, those comprise of fifty, sixty-five and twenty-five percent of accreditation, respectively, and last ten percent would be readiness, and that's just a measure of , uh, chronic absenteeism. Middle school's slightly different, mastery and growth are the same, readiness, we add an additional component this year, and that is advanced coursework. This is just a measure of the students who are eligible for, um, advanced math as measured by an EOC or Algebra I or Geometry taken at the middle school level. I failed to remove that final bullet, the eighth grade, um, performance task. It was to be implemented this year, it may be field-tested, we're waiting for more direction from the DOE on that. Um, I'll note one thing, I astercized EL progress under mastery. That is contingent on meeting a certain threshold with the number of students in that measure, and that stu, that number is fifteen. If we meet it, it is included. If not, that ten percent that would be allotted to English language progress goes to growth. So, in, in the case of the middle school, as we'll see, it'll be an additional five percent for reading and five percent for math, math growth. High school's a lot different. We maintain the mastery component, fifty percent of accreditation, again, reading, math, science, SOL and VAP scores, and again, the English language proficiency, but then it gets a little different. Uh, graduation will be fifteen percent of accountability, and that is measured by the federal four-year graduation rate. This only includes standard and advanced diplomas. It does not include ISAP completers or GED completers, it does not include applied studies diplomas earned, just four-year graduates. Readiness will bring back another graduation measure, and that would be the six-year graduation rate. So, students who do not get a standard diploma, finish with an applied studies diploma, do have the opportunity to finish out their high school degree in the next two years. So, they want to give credit for those students who we do get through to eventually get the applied studies and/or a standard or an advanced diploma. Additionally, in readiness, we have chronic absenteeism, which is only a small component of high school accreditation, and lastly, the three-E framework, which is a major component at twenty-five percent. I'll unpack that a little bit. The three Es are enrollment, and this is an indexed measure of advanced coursework. So our dual enrollment and AP courses, both course outcomes and assessments connected to those classes are included. Employment, this is our CTE measure, this is gonna measure the number of sequential completers and credentials earned, and there's gonna be differentiation between high demand and, uh, low demand credentials. So we are reviewing and analyzing what credential exams we're giving to the students to make sure we can maximize this. Work-based learning is also included in there, as augmented by the one-point-two-five-point outcome. And last is enlistment, and this is not measuring how many kids go into the armed services, it is just, uh, attempts and scores earned on the ASFAB. And the ASFAB test, it is an armed service vocational aptitude battery, but it is excellent in helping identify appropriate career pathways, and there's a lot of data that can be derived from that. So, some of the differences on the old versus the new, um, obviously the number needed in a subgroup, which is extremely impactful for our L population. Um, also impactful for our L population is when they are included in our overall outcomes. In the past, we used to have, uh, eleven semesters before they were included, now we only have three. Also, some nuanced rules with when transfers are included, the number of students overall that are, uh, included in calculation. In the past, we have, uh, exemptions for medical, student abstances, and parent refusals. Now we have to meet a certain threshold that is aligned with the federal mandate of ninety-five percent, that's our participation rate, and also recovery is not included. And one thing I didn't put on there, because I put on the next slide, results are indexed, and indexing is a little bit different, especially when it comes to mastery. So in the past, a pass was a pass, and a, and failure to be proficient was, didn't count. Now we are indexed, so you get extra points for a pass advance at a one-point-two-five. A pass is just a point, a fail basic is three-quarters of a point, and a fail below basic is a quarter of a point. And there are four performance categories that are applicable to reading and math grades three through eight. All other tested areas have only three proficiency levels, and that would be, um, pass advance, pass proficient, and fail. So one-point-two-five-one and three-quarter points. It is important to note that that index does not include a zero. Statistically, that has significant magnitude. And I'll articulate that a little bit when I show you a different index. Growth. In the past, we used to simply compare student score from the year prior. Now we have a very technical, uh, way to calculate student growth, and I'm not gonna differentiate or disaggregate everything that's on there, but basically, there is a growth expectation for every student. VVAS is the system that the Department of Education leveraged this year to determine growth. And what it does is determines, uh, students' relative scores, or scores, determines a student's passing score relative to their calculated expected score. So if a student is expected to score a four-hundred, they would receive extra points for scoring above that, or fewer points for scoring below that. I will note that this index does have a zero, and I remember the first thing I said to Dr. Hester when this rolled out, we're going to have to worry more about growth than mastery, simply because statistically, anytime you put zeros in the mix, it's hard to calculate and overcome. Grades, uh, the main differences between growth, again, in the past, it was grades three through eight and only students who failed, now it is all students in grades four through eight, and it is all students regardless of a pass or failure the year prior. Growth and mastery are completely separate now. In the past, there used to be the combined rate, um, and now it is, again, a separate category for both growth and mastery. Um, and we didn't find out about these and what our results are until just this week, so it doesn't behoove us for planning and preparation going into the next school year. Lastly, after we calculate all of our outcomes, we get an overall school designation. Distinguished would be ninety points or higher, on-track, eighty to eighty-nine points, and I won't go to the bottom two, because they're not going to be applicable to us at this point in time. So, our preliminary results, again, these results were made available to us just earlier, uh, this week. We have, I'm sorry, late, middle of last week, we have fielded some questions to DOE about some slight discrepancies with some of the numbers and some calculations. Um, I augmented those to the best of my ability in a most conservative approach, so I do not foresee these results dropping or reducing, they could increase slightly. Uh, but again, the, the discrepancies we found were not very significant. Rockfish River. All right. Overall mastery calculation, they scored fifty-two-point-three-four out of fifty-five possible points, and you can see there that they did not meet the threshold for L students, so that additional ten points will drop down into growth, where they scored twenty-seven-point-two-three out of thirty-five possible points. And lastly, almost nine points, eight-point-nine-eight points out of ten for their chronic absenteeism in the readiness indicator, leaving them with an overall on-track designation at eighty-eight-point-five-five percent, real close to getting to the ninety percent threshold on that. So excellent job. Oops. Thai River. Thai River earned a score of fifty-four-point-seven out of sixty-five for mastery, and you will note that the L indicator does count, they just exceeded that by several students, so it impacted them significantly in the mastery component. Growth, so we have less growth points there, um, simply because, than Rockfish did because of the, uh, L scores not counting into that column. Seventeen out of twenty-five points, and a high chronic absenteeism rate of, not rate, uh, outcome, of eight-point-nine-nine out of ten, so leaving them with an eighty-point-six-nine in the on-track category as well. Excellent job at Thai River. Nelson Middle School, forty-four-point-five-two points out of fifty for mastery, did not include EL scores, redistributed to growth, um, where they earned a twenty-one-point-five-two out of thirty points. And readiness, eight-point-seven-one out of ten for chronic absenteeism, and almost maxed out the category, ninety-eight-point-zero-seven percent, or nine-point-eight percent out of ten points, leaving them at eighty-four-point-five-five, solidly in the middle of being on-track. Excellent job at the middle school. Nelson County High School, L's did count in the mastery component, uh, forty-four-point-seven out of fifty. Graduation for the four-year rate, thirteen-point-oh-eight out of fifteen points. And in the readiness indicators, uh, four-point-two-six out of five for chronic absenteeism, so not as great a magnitude for absenteeism at the high school. The six-year graduation rate, four-point-five-eight out of five, and then exceeding the index category for the three-E readiness, uh, twenty-five-point-three-five points out of twenty-five, leaving them with a ninety-one-point-nine-eight in a distinguished category designation. So, now we take all this information, we combine that with the information shared last month with the pass rates, and we start going through our data at a very granular level. Principals and their teams include that into their school and performance plans, and our goals are just to continue to maximize our strengths and identify strategies to mitigate our weaknesses. We know we need to look at L, we know we need to look at growth measures. I will note, VVAS is not going to be used as the metric to calculate growth this year. The state did not renew their contract with them. I do not know what the next growth measure will be. Um, several options will be discussed at the state board meeting this month, so maybe I'll be able to finalize that information to you next month.
How much of this is part of, um...
There was a lot in the media about reconfiguring scores and whatnot from the Department of Ed or War for Ed.
This is standalone from last year's cut scores. So I do have modeling data if I were to implement the proposed cut scores. That being said, we know what the cut scores are gonna be, we're waiting on direction for implementation. There is conversation of a stepped, so it's not, we're gonna move from a four-seventy, or, uh, a four-hundred to a four-seventy-eight in EOC reading, we'll have multiple years to get there. And there's also conversations of a new category, which is, um, emerging proficiency. So, and I'd be more than happy to share what our results would be based off of our twenty-four, twenty-five results with the new, uh, cut scores.
Job, I mean, go back and tell them, they're, they're doing an incredible job. No matter what that measure is important, I don't want to discount the work that the kids, the staff, everybody's doing to get these kids where they need to be, and I, I think that's, you said it well when you started off your presentation, focused on that.
Thank you. And that was the, the message we've been communicating, we know the cut scores are gonna change, but our job and our process doesn't change. Keep doing what we're doing and keep doing it well.
Awesome.
Outstanding results.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And thank...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Teachers and principals and students alike, yeah.
That's exactly right. Okay. And, next up, NCPS Pathways to Success Goals and Objectives Update.
You want it?
No, go ahead.
Do you want it?
No, I don't want it.
She said, "No, I don't do that." I'm just gonna, I'm not even gonna let you do that. I'm just gonna take it over. I'm gonna take this with me, 'cause I'm just... I'm just gonna take all my toys with me. All right.
Which file do we need to look at, the updated or the other one?
Um, we're gonna look at the, um, hold on, let me go back and see what you're seeing. Um, we're gonna go and look at, um, the Nelson County Pathways to Success Review, so not the updated.
Oh, okay.
Not the updated, so I will, what I will do, I don't need that, so this, the file that looks like this.
Yes, right.
I am not going to read through all of this. You're welcome. Um, this is, um, available, so what this is, is this is a snapshot, and it isn't every single strategy or task that we do, this is a snapshot of all the different things that we do to achieve, one, the goal, but each of the, um, objectives beneath it. And so, a couple years ago, twenty-twenty-three, we went through the comprehensive plan process and approved a comprehensive plan, and we call that our Nelson County Public Schools Pathways to Success Twenty-Twenty-Three, Twenty-Twenty-Nine. And so, everything that we do, we try to align it, and as I mentioned before, we're, we're trying to vertically align our goals and our objectives, um, all the way through, um, our, uh, division plan, our school plans, um, our squ... way through our division plan, our school plans, our squad plans, our lesson plan, like all of there is in alignment. And so what you see here is every other year in the odd year, so 2025, we're here, prior to November 1st, we are to provide an update on our progress of our goals. So we've spent three months doing that. This is the small snapshot of all the various tasks. We've been giving you the data to show where we are and how is that with our comp plan. And so the reason why we've taken a lot of time is it's important to understand where we are and what we're doing, because we know, one, it's always good to know where you are. It's hard to know where you're going if you don't know where you're starting. But I think it's also, we know there's a lot of changes coming. And it's to continue to provide that evidence and support of, we are doing what we are supposed to be doing, and this is the pathway that we're taking to get there. And so when we take a look at all the different goals and objectives, we are in progress for all of those. It's a five-year plan. We're in progress to achieve these goals, and we've given you all the data. And this is how we've gotten there. And so that's really what I wanted to be able to provide to you. And it's under each of these objectives. You see, it's 14 pages, and each of these objectives and what snapshots, not every single thing that's taken place, but snapshots to get there. Okay? So, you know, you have that. This is available. This will be available, just like in 2023, we reviewed our objectives. This is available in our comp plan. And I'm going to ask you to switch to that in just a second, just so we can see the connecting aspects to it and some adjustments that I want to recommend making. But I just want to show you, this is available for anybody to see, because it's attached to our comp plan. But this just kind of helps us, this is our roadmap and our path for our pathways. Does that make sense? So you're able to say, this is our progress on what we've been doing. I will say, if you take a look at the screen, you'll see that purple text. And what that purple text represents is, we need to adjust, under Goal 1, Objective 1.8, we need to adjust that. We talked about, this is a living plan, and it's really important, you know, sometimes, and particularly in the past, some of our strategic plans and comp plans kind of turn into something that you do, and then it goes on a shelf somewhere. And we try to make this a living document, and we try to make this something that we're at division level, and then we work with our administrators and we work with our teachers to make those connections. Well, a couple of years ago, there was something called the College Career and Civics Readiness Index. That is now transitioned into the 3E. Okay? Heard Dr. Garza Binsky talk about that. Well, we need to make that representation in our comp plan. And so what I am recommending is that we change it to, from providing more pathways to achieve and maintain a Level 1 status in the College Career and Civics Readiness Index to provide opportunities and maintain current options to support students to pursue a variety of possibilities in employment, enlistment, and/or enrollment to prepare for post-secondary pathway to success. Okay? So our strategies and tasks are now aligned to this, simply because that is a part of the accreditation model, we have to update this. But I'm just trying to draw your attention to that. If you have any questions on these strategies and tasks, I am more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. But I want to kind of draw you back to the comp plan, if you don't have any questions. So again, our progress, we are making progress on all of this. We are kind of right in the middle of it. And as we've talked about, shared our data, we're trending in the directions that we need to go. But as Mr. Cheep said, there's always room for improvement. There's always room for us to be more successful in certain areas. But, you know, as we start to see, it gets harder and harder, the more improved you get, it gets harder and harder to increase that. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make that transition to the updated NCS Pathways, just to remind us of kind of like, what are we doing and what is our guide? What is our map to get there? And so the reason why I'm presenting this is, we're going to make this available on our website for people to comment on, because as we go through, this is a living document. But one of the additions that I've made to our comp plan is on page nine. So if you are able to bring up that presentation, on page nine, I added trending challenges. Because a part of what we do, we have to acknowledge. We have to, you know, we can do all the successes and all the great things that are going on, but we do have some challenges. And so as you see here, also a part of what we want to be responsible for reporting is, well, we do have decreasing enrollment. That is a challenge. Drastically increasing local composite. We experienced that two years ago. I think we can anticipate that that is going to happen again. I think we will be getting those numbers in November. I think we need to anticipate that the LCI will increase. And that, what that means is, that will require a greater responsibility on our local government to support the budget, as opposed to having greater contributions from the state. And that is not through the fault of our county. That is a predetermined formula that has been used for a very long time, that we are advocating to be really studied and addressed. And that has been addressed in the J-LARX study, but we really continue to say, you know, for rural resort areas, that is a difficult formula for us, because it takes into account, it kind of seems at times to overvalue certain areas of the county and underrepresent others. We have a stagnant or declining economic development. We have limited housing market, and particularly when we talk about affordable housing, or housing that is more likely to attract younger families with children. We can also talk that it's sometimes more, it's sometimes harder to attract employees who are able to afford those houses as you try to attract them. And it's a beautiful area, there's some things to do, but trying to make it attractive and affordable to young families and employees that work in, that are more likely to work in school divisions, in various positions. We also see an increased median age and population in Nelson County. See, like we've talked about decreasing enrollment in institutions of higher education as they specialize in positions that impact schools. We're seeing fewer enrollments in teacher preparation programs, administrator preparation programs, school counseling, all these, you know, behavior management, all these different positions that require specific endorsements, specific education. People aren't enrolling the programs. So that is a challenge. We're all competing for these individuals is because, as I think, Dr., nope, Mr. Belaico mentioned, the 100% high-quality positions. So those are still the expectations that they're fully endorsed in all the areas that they teach, but yet it's harder and harder to find those individuals, and we get graded on that. And then also industry staffing shortages. Take your pick. There are shortages in any area within the schools. So those are things I felt like it was important to have that expressed. We'll put this on our website and make available for some feedback for 30 days. And I think that just, it makes it important for our community to see that we want to continue to have this be an applicable part of what we do. The other area that I want to draw your attention to, that I did make that change, is on page 13, is kind of taking out the reference to the CCR, CCCR index, and replacing it with the new 3E compatible. I told you that you can find every, just about every piece of information you'd want in our comprehensive plan. If you scroll to the very back, this page, on page 22, there are links. There are links to our school quality profile. There are links to these monthly pathways that we present here. Individual school improvement plans. You go here, and I will change that coming soon, because we're approving them. These are our improvement plans. So people, you know, we're trying to be as transparent as we can be in what we're doing so people understand that they can access this. Okay, did I get away from my little? There we go. So again, we have our annual budget presentations, because that incorporates all the decision-making. You know, sometime, we are as transparent as we can possibly be in what we do and our budgets. And so we put our budget presentations, not only available on our website, but in this, so everybody understands, this is why we do what we do. There are reasons, there are connections, there are things that we have to accomplish, and we need that part of it. So our budget presentations are in there. And then the facility study. We want to be able to say, this is a whole big picture. This is a broad picture of what we do, so the facility study is in there. So I just wanted to draw everybody's attention to what the last three months have been spent trying to do, and that paint that picture of where we are and how we are trending in the right direction. I think last week, I sent a message out to all of our staff, I sent a message out to all of our families, I sent a message out to media, highlighting what we are doing and where we are. Not just that we're 34th in the state, but in the individual areas. And we recognize that we still have room to grow, but more specifically, we're trying to communicate to our families, these cut scores are coming. We continue to promote high expectations, but we also promote high support. And, you know, we want rigor, but we want the reasonable steps to take towards that. And the one common thing that we've been saying is, at the end of the day, our teachers are going to continue to keep doing what they do well. When our students are in front of our teachers and our staff, they grow. They are more successful. At some point in time, like we can't, it's hard to ask our staff to do more than what they're already doing to try to contribute to this. They are working hard, and we try to get them to understand that we recognize that, we are advocating, we are fighting on their behalf to have some reasonable approaches to some of these adjustments. And so that continues to take place. We are proud of everything that our employees and our students and our families do. We want to celebrate everything that they do, and that their endeavors are not, you know, they're recognized. And it's not all about the A honor roll. Sometimes it's, are you on A roll? So we're recognizing everybody. You know, we're going to ask you to approve a gifted plan, you know, every five years, but we have these plans for all of our students. And because each one of our students, just like each one of our employees, is incredibly important. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, you know, report out, I'm kind of the tail end of all of the data presentations and the progress towards our goals. So I just wanted to be able to provide that to you and let you know that that is where we are, and answer any questions that you may have.
I don't have any questions, but.
I think the vertical alignment is so, so important. And yet, there's always going to be room for improvement, and it is going to be harder to improve as you go on. But the numbers look really good, and they're all trending in the right direction. But the vertical alignment, I love that, because it makes it so that when you have changes that come upon you after you've started the school year, then you can make adjustments in your comprehensive plan, and that can go down the line, you know? So, and everybody's kind of pulling the wagon in the same direction. So, yeah, really good, really good stuff.
I love the transparency.
Yes.
I love, I love the transparency. One of the things that we hear in education sometimes is, we're not hearing the truth. They're not telling us, we don't see the scores. Where are they? How are our schools performing? And I think this aligns everything in one place, that you can see the story, the truth of what's happening in Nelson County Public Schools. And I just really appreciate that. And I think if the public wants to find it, wants to see it, wants to hear it, it's there for them to access it.
Yeah, and to go hand in hand with that, when budget season comes, if there are questions as to where things are being spent, there is a direct alignment showing exactly what we're doing, why we're doing it, and how we're doing it. So I appreciate you making that note.
Sure. And I think it, it doesn't matter what our enrollment is, we still have to perform and do the same exact things that everybody else has to do.
That's right.
We still, our county is still 470 square miles. It doesn't change that. We still have our building. We still have all of these things that we're expected to do. And I think that that's important. You know, we, we, we work to try to maximize our resources and our people and our outcomes.
You know, whether, you know, we've been put in hard-to-reach situations or really difficult situations to meet our budget goals, we, the results are still, that we do, the teachers, the principals, your staff, still show up every day and do what's required of them, even with the having to jump through hoops sometimes, or just have to let some things go. But their professionalism shows up each and every day, and we appreciate that. You know, we keep fighting the fight. You know, the information's there, and we always says it's there. It's just, you know, you look at it, ask the questions, but the results are still the same every year. We're still trending up, you know, being 34th in the state. That's awesome. You know, we still have room to grow, but we are, everybody's doing their jobs, no matter what hurdles we have to go, you know, try to overcome as a board with the budget. So I really appreciate everything that everyone's doing. And, you know, if the public can't see it, I'm sorry, but we appreciate it.
Anything else for Dr. Hester?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Shannon, it's your time. Talk a little bit about the activity fund audit.
So each year, we have to have the funds that are raised and spent at the building level audited by a certified public accountant. And I'll just read from the opinion on page one, from the CPA firm of Davidson, Doyle and Hilton, who came in in July and worked with all of our bookkeepers to analyze their financial records. We have audited the accompanying statements of cash receipts, dispersment and balances of the County of Nelson, Virginia School Activity Funds for the year ended June 30th, and related notes to the financial statement. In our opinion, the financial statement referred to above presents fairly in all material respects a stated statement of cash receipts, dispersment and balances of the County of Nelson as though the year ended June 30th, 2025, in accordance with the basis of accounting as described in Note 1. Our basis of accounting at the building level is a cash basis, basically. The money that's in your bank account is the money you have. So when you write a check, it comes off the balance, and they don't look at encumbrances and they don't look at accruals. At the end of the year, we get that information up to our office, and we do include them in our final annual report on an accrual basis. Our responsibilities is to, for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statement in accordance with the cash basis of accounting. We're responsible for the design, implementation and maintenance of internal control relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of financial statements that are free from material misstatement with a due to fraud or error. I'm happy to say from page three, that their, results of their tests disclosed no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under the government accounting standards. So they found no material misstatements across the division, and I am proud to say that we have a good bookkeeping staff, and we've had them for a number of years. I worry when they decide to leave us, but so far, so good. Would like to talk a little bit about the balances. The high school started July 1st of 2024, $186,000 through all of its athletic funds, club funds, administration funds for like pictures or vending, those kinds of things. They had cash receipts of $551,000, cash dispersment of $481,000, so they're in a much better position at year end at $255,751. Again, that's cash basis, so that doesn't look at what they might owe for outstanding bills that they need to pay. The middle school started at $72,138, and they went, they received $138,251. They dispersed $121,000, so they're in the balance with $88,000. So they're better off than they were at the beginning of the year as well, with $88,000 in their accounts. Rockfish River started at $28,887.64. They took in $58,000. They spent $71,000 thereabout and ended with $16,351.19. Ty River started with $16,696.23. They had cash receipts of $96,591.39, spent $56,741.93, and ended with $56,545.69. Do want to explain that one just a little bit, because they were the recipient of funds to upgrade our inclusive playground. And so those funds were in their account, waiting for the playground to be installed. So at the beginning of last fiscal year, we had $303,814.26, and we ended the year at $417,080.40. There were some findings I did want to bring to your attention, and it's probably my favorite page, because. my favorite page because it is the most actionable ones that give us, um, the auditor's insight from when he's pulling all of the purchase orders, the invoices and the payments. The system-wide, they found no recommendations for our internal controls and, um, the way that we manage the funds at the building level. At Ty River Elementary School, they had no recommendations that thought that everything was running like clockwork there. At Rockfish River Elementary School, they did note a particular check that had been written, um, for three months that had not cleared the bank. I think we're now a credit card society, and so paper checks sometimes sit on a dresser or in a drawer, and, um, we just need to work to have them cleared up in a timely manner. Had the same, um, kind of incident at the middle school, we had several checks that were older that did not clear by June thirtieth. Um, we're going to be working with those folks to make sure they cash the check or to see whether we have to reissue it. There was an incident where the bookkeeper, um, made a purchase, was reimbursing herself, had the principal sign, and she signed. There are three signatories at the building levels. It would be the principal, the assistant principal, and the bookkeeper. Our checks require two signatures on every check. Um, I think there was an incident that one person was out, and so being the other signatory, she signed her own check, which is not what we would prefer happen. So we're going to make sure that everyone understands that you just need to wait till the other two people are there, if it's coming to you. And then there was only one finding at the high school, and it involved, um, a deposit being made to the, um, school bookkeeper that only had one signature that verified the amounts to be deposited, and they would like to have two. Sometimes it's difficult when you have like a volleyball game, you have one person doing concessions and not multiple people, but they do want two people, they want a check and a cross-check before it gets to the bookkeeper. And so we'll make sure that they are aware that that is the preferred, um, method, but overall, I think it is a very good audit, and kudos to our bookkeepers for keeping this in alignment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that is the end of items for information, so we're looking at items for action at this point. Are there any questions about the wit and wisdom curriculum to be declared surplus? If not, if I can have a motion to, um, to declare that as surplus?
I move, we, uh, declare the wit and wisdom curriculum to be a surplus.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's been approved. So we're on to the second reading of policy updates from September. There were really only three policies, and they were essentially just. Yeah, verbiage, and no, no changes to the content really of the policy. So if there are no questions on those particular policies, if I can have a motion to approve, um, the policy updates for September?
I'll recommend approval of the policy updates for September.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's been approved. The next thing we have on the agenda for approval, as Dr. Balaico alluded to, it's the N C P S Gifted Plan. If you had an opportunity to look at that and you've got questions, we can bring, um, Mr. Balaico up to discuss it. If not, may I have a motion to approve the gifted plan?
Everybody okay?
Aye.
I make the motion that we, um, approve the gifted plan.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I did put something up on the screen, just so everybody knows, like, when we talk about the gifted plan, it spans K through twelve. So there are, um, supports and, um, for the, the talented and gifted all throughout the experience, and so I think that was a really important slide to be able to see.
Thank you for highlighting that. Yeah, thanks for highlighting, but we already approved. Okay, so at this point, may I have a motion for us to go into closed session?
All right, I'll make a motion that we go into closed session. As pursuant to the code, what is it, two-two dash three-seven A one of the Virginia Code of Virginia, that discusses just legal matters?
Personnel?
Personnel, uh, personnel.
Matters, and then, um.
And also legal matters pursuant to two-two, three-seven, one-one, A seven of the Virginia Code, the Code of Virginia.
May I have a second for that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now in closed session.